Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to Praval City Council Tuesday, January 19th, 2016, 6:00 PM City Council meeting. We're going to ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance of American flag. Remain standing for our invocation by Counselor Boone tonight.
Moving allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me, please. Lord, we come before you tonight thankful to be here. Thank you for the privilege of government in this country, privilege that you have lasted on our country for a long time. I pray that we would take it seriously, that each council member here tonight would take the business of our city to you before we do anything else, because we seek your wisdom, God, and we want to do it your way. We ask for your presence in this chamber tonight for clear thinking, for good business work to be done. You would bless all of us who are not able to be with us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Calls meeting to order. Tonight, we have a character trait of the month is diligence, focusing my effort on the work at hand. Character trait of the month is diligence. This time, we have approval of amendments from the public here in the City Council meeting, January 5th, 2016. Have motion to approve.
So moved.
Have motion? Second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approve of those minutes, signify by raising your right hand, and those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and come to the microphone. Yes, ma'am.
John Lee Finnegan at 211, Dear Trace, and I'm coming before you regarding Resolution Number Five, the very last one, and I think I'll just kind of read this and then maybe we can get back to the answers. HPRA purchased Mill property with a bridge loan for approximately 1.7 million, and I was wondering how much of that has been paid off or if it's paid off in full. Also, they have received bids for the renovation of the office building that you are voting on tonight to lease from, of contracts between 1.9 million and 2.3 million, and to my knowledge, a contracting company has not been selected. And when one is selected, does anyone know if there's a timeframe projected for the completion of the renovation? And the reason I'm asking this is that this resolution states the basic rent payment of 249,000 annually commences during this fiscal year, so therefore, will the payments begin once the renovations are completed and the city is ready to move in? And could this possibly be after the fiscal year ends and we go into 2016, 2017? I do know that the HPRA gets 15% of the total budgeted lodging tax collection, which, according to the December unaudited general fund revenue by group, which is dated as of January 16th, I just printed it off the city's website, is $1,289,600, and 15% would amount to $193,440 for HPRA, which would make the rent payment an additional $55,560. Also, according to Tommy Newton, during our June 4th lunch meeting, the lodging tax allotment would be discontinued. And I noticed in this resolution, there is nothing that states said allotment would be discontinued, and I'm wondering if that should not be incorporated into it. Also, where was this 249,000 annual rent payment budgeted in the current budget? And are all the furnishing stockings, et cetera, that is going to be to set up the building, costs are also already budgeted? I am assuming HPRA will use this 249,000 to cover the costs of the mortgage payments and renovations. Will this be enough? Jackson Thornton says the city is financially accountable for HPRA, so what happens if it is not enough? We don't know how soon or if Lettich will purchase the old Mill buildings and when those payments might begin. Lastly, I do recommend everyone go down to the planning department to look at what is planned for this building. In my mind, for a town of 35,000-plus citizens, it will be quite impressive and definitely will make us the envy of the southeast. So that's my comments, and I just wondered if I could get any answers on those questions. Because it was just posted this afternoon, I couldn't get any answers. So I'm just wondering, since you're voting to lease the building, that maybe this, you know, you should have some of these answers.
Well, Ms. Finnegan, I don't have any of the answers right now. The administration may have some, if you would like to share them, but I don't.
But you're, again, you're voting on it tonight, so the questions aren't getting answered until you vote on it.
Yeah.
So it seems like, you know, those, those questions would be, you know, you would be able to answer some of those at least.
Does anyone?
It's my understanding the council will be briefed in executive session on the questions, answers to the questions that you ask.
Oh, you're going into the executive session tonight?
That will be the chairman's call.
Oh, okay. Since you brought it up, okay.
We are, ma'am, I just hadn't gotten to that point yet, but we are going.
Oh, okay. Well, I just, you know, that's a lot of money, quarter of a million dollars, and we're already kind of paying for the loan, and then we're going to be paying for the renovations, so it just seems like we should know how that money is being, going to be juggled to kind of pay for everything. That's a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Proud to moving forward, since that has already been brought up. The council will be asked to go in executive session tonight to discuss economic development project at the end of this session. Mayor, you have any comment?
Yes. Good evening. You know, yesterday was the Todd County Improvement Association MLK Day Parade, and Council President Wood and I appreciated all who were in the parade and worked this parade, and the city was well represented there, so I think it was a well-run event honoring a great man there. As we all know, Daniel Pratt established us in 1839. In 1973, City Hall received a much-needed expansion, was upgraded to what we have today. In the 1970 census, Pratt had a population of 13,116. We've grown to nearly 36,000 today. With this information on tonight's agenda, I appreciate your support on item number five. This positions us for another 50 years of growth, and it's something that has been very much needed over the past several years. But moving along to other current events, Saturday, the city will hold its Mardi Gras Celebration. Festival start at 11:00 AM downtown with vendors and lots of fun. Parade kicks off at 2:00 PM at the Todd County Courthouse. You can still register to participate in the parade through tomorrow. For more details, please check our website. Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor at this time? Thank you. And also, just let me add that Counselor Whiteside and Counselor Boone also participated in that parade. Thank you all. At this time, we have report, council and special committees, Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir. The wastewater committee met Thursday, January 14th, 2006, at 9:00 AM with Mr. Jim Marshall of Jackson Thornton Utilities. Mr. Marshall has provided a minimum rate increase needed to meet the projected debt service for the anticipated $25 million Phase One cost. These funds will be used to upgrade the Pine Creek facility and provide some enhanced software technology to the Otoga Creek plant. Committee is currently exploring two rate options. Either of these options would meet our projected needs. Mr. Marshall will present the findings of his analysis to the council on February 2nd. Tonight, the wastewater committee is seeking your support to amend the wastewater enterprise fund budget so that we can begin the engineering work needed for both our facilities. The two work orders amount to $1,177,000. Due to the sound physical management by all parties in this administration and the council, funds in the enterprise account are on hand to pay for this work. It is expected to take 12 months for the engineering work to be completed, four months to bid, accept the bid, notify the contractor, and allow a reasonable time to mobilize, and 30 months to construct. Assuming there are no delays, this projected timeline shows that we are two months shy of four years from the time you give your authorization. Your support of Resolution Number Two is appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Striplin. Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir. The street committee met last week. We discussed the repair work on the Queen Smith Road. Robbie updated us on the paving project. So far, the costs are holding true to preliminary estimates, and we discussed issues that arose from the recent flooding event and potential funding sources for some of these repairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Whiteside?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, I will be calling a fire committee meeting for Friday, the 22nd, at 3:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank all the council members for your diligent work in your council committees. I want to especially thank Counselor Striplin for his work that he's done on this wastewater committee. It's a very, very time-consuming, but most important, project, and thank all the others that were involved, and also urge councils full of support in moving forward so that we can get started on that. At this time, we have report the status of the city finances from the financial director.
The first sheet in your packet is the revenue statement by type. Shows that year-to-date, we've received a total of $5,615,599.95 of our revenue. So we are actually 3.67% up from last year at this point. The next sheet in your packet is the tax breakdown comparison, showing all the different tax line items. You'll see that for the month of December, on the tax side of the house, we were up 2.96%. The next set of sheets in the packet is the council expense information by department. On the expense side of the house, we're 25% through the year. You will see that everybody's running right in line where they should be, and as of right now, we have actually spent $1,092,000 less this year than last year. That is primarily due to the bond that was called last year, earlier in the year, and so that's kind of put last year's up a little bit higher. The next sheet in the packet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement for the month of December. You'll see that they're right in line where they should be as far as their revenues and their expenses. The next sheet in the packet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. They, again, are running right in line with it where they should be as far as their revenue and their expenses. Next sheet is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. You will see they are lagging a little bit behind on their revenues, but they, their expenses are holding down as well, so they're, they're holding pretty well. Since it is the end of the first quarter, we do have the other three funds included in tonight's packet. You'll see that the gas tax special revenue fund income statement for the month of October, November, and December is included, the next sheet. That is running right in line where it should be for the different projects that we've got going on. The next sheet is the capital projects fund. Not a lot of activity in this fund yet. We do have the road bridge project in this fund, as well as part of the local paving, so that we'll see some activity in the next couple of months. The next sheet in the packet is the group health fund income statement. This is one that we're watching very closely. As you, as you can kind of see, the funds are kind of dwindling in that account. We have increased this year the amount that the city is putting in that. That is something we're going to have to deal with in the very near future, how to better fund that account. But we're watching it very closely to make sure that it maintains the funds that it Next sheet in the packet is the bank account balances report, showing that the total of all city funds at the end of December 31st, 2015, is $15,317,517. And the last sheet in the packet is the council, accounts payable and debt balances, showing that the balance of all city accounts payable on debt as of 12/31/15 was $38,446.36.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Does any council member have any questions or comments for Mr. Bowles at this time? Thank you. At this time, we're going to our agenda. We do have a consent agenda tonight to consider. We have nine items on that agenda, consent agenda, to consider. Number one is a resolution to declare landowners' minority a non-responsible bidder for bid number 016001. Number two is a resolution to declare tailor-made ambulances a non-responsible bidder for bid number 016002. Number three is a resolution to declare southeastern specialty vehicles a non-responsible bidder for bid number 016-002. Number four is a resolution to set a public hearing to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to El Sabrerol Mexican Restaurant LLC doing business as El Sabrerol Mexican Restaurant. Number five is a resolution to set a public hearing for a lounge retail liquor class two package store license for Soul Net LLC doing business at Soul Net Package Store. Number six, resolution to surplus three vehicles from the police department. Number seven, resolution to surplus one vehicle from the engineering department. Number eight is to authorize mayor to make application for FY 2016 transportation alternative program funds from the Montgomery MPO. And number nine is a resolution to adopt the advisory Todd County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have a motion to place these nine items on a consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be any discussion? All in favor of placing these nine items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand? And these items have been placed on a consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be any discussion on any of these nine items? All in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand? And the consent agenda has been adopted. We will move further in our agenda. Resolution number one is to amend FY 2016 budget and to release funds to purchase one LifeBook T725 laptop computer through state contract number 4012566 from Pinnacle Networks at a cost of $2,212.54. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the police department traffic unit has a need for one LifeBook T725 laptop computer, and whereas said computers available through state contract number 4012566 from Pinnacle Networks at a cost of $2,212.54, now therefore be resolved, the city council of City of Prattville, the fiscal year 2016 bulletproof vest grant reserves hereby decreased by $2,212.54. And that fiscal 2016 budget line item, police department equipment maintenance, is hereby increased by $2,212.54. Be it further resolved that the funds in the amount of $2,212.54 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Pinnacle Networks, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2016 budget line item, police department equipment maintenance. So moved, Mr. President.
Have motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Resolution number two is to amend FY 2016 wastewater enterprise fund and authorize work order seven project number PV-1601 and work order number eight project number PV-1602 with Engineers of the South LLC for professional service, design services for Pine Creek and Otoga Creek skater improvements for the wastewater department at a cost not to exceed $1,177,000. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville wastewater department has a need for professional design services for Pine Creek and Otoga Creek skater improvements, and whereas the city desires to retain Engineers of the South LLC to provide such services as described in work order number seven and work order number eight, and whereas Engineers of the South shall provide design services for Pine Creek improvements at a cost not to exceed $1,070,000, and for the Otoga Creek skater improvements at a cost not to exceed $107,000. And whereas Section 41-16-51A3 Code of Alabama 1975 is amended, allows contracts to secure services with consultants possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that fiscal year 2016 wastewater enterprise fund reserves are hereby decreased by $1,177,000, and that the fiscal year 2016 wastewater enterprise fund engineering drafting is hereby increased by $1,177,000. Be it further resolved that the funds in an amount of $1,177,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Engineers of the South LLC, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2016 budget line items wastewater enterprise funds engineering drafting. Be it further resolved that the work order number seven, project number PV-1601, and work order number eight, project number PV-1602, are hereby authorized with Engineers of the South LLC for said professional design services for the wastewater department, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to execute said agreement. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand? And this resolution is adopted. Number three is a resolution to award bid number 016001 to Peach State Ambulance for the purchase of one 2016 Silverado 3500 HD two-wheel-drive regular cab for the fire department at a cost of $28,700. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has a need for one 2016 Silverado 3500 HD two-wheel-drive regular cab for ambulance chassis, and whereas eight bids were let for the fire department for said vehicle, and whereas four sealed bids were received, opened and read in public on January 12th, 2016. Whereas Peach State's ambulance was the lowest responsible bidder at the cost of $28,700. Whereas said vehicle is a budget expense to the fire department. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 016-001 in the amount of $28,700 to Peach State Ambulance for one 2016 Silverado 3500 HD two-wheel-drive regular cab, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2016 budget line item, fire department slash capital outlay. I so moved.
We have motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number four is a resolution to award bid number 016-002 to Peach State Ambulance for the purchase of type one ambulance remount for the fire department at a cost of $73,499. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas City of Prattville Fire Department has a need of one type one ambulance remount on the city-provided chassis, and whereas eight bids were let for the fire department for said ambulance remount, and whereas three sealed bids were received, opened and read in public on January 12th, 2016, and whereas Peach State Ambulance was the lowest responsible bidder at the cost of $73,490, and whereas said ambulance remount is a budget expense of the fire department. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 016-002 in the amount of $73,490 to Peach State Ambulance for one type one ambulance remount, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY 2016 budget line item, fire department slash capital outlay. I so moved.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number five is a resolution entered into a lease agreement with the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority for the Pratt Mill project at an annual cost of $249,000. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Whereas the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority has acquired the former Continental Eagle property, and whereas the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority shall develop said property as part of the Pratt Mill project in the City of Prattville Central Business District, and whereas the City of Prattville has a need to lease the office building at 201 Gen Shop Hill Road for the use as a public safety facility, and whereas the facility is a portion of the project, and whereas in order to lease the facility to the City of Prattville and to make the necessary improvements, therefore, the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority will issue redevelopment bonds, and whereas the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority will lease said office building to the City of Prattville and make necessary renovations to said office building for the City of Prattville pursuant to the lease agreement, which, among other items, provides for the basic rent payments of $249,000 per fiscal year, commencing with the City of Prattville's fiscal year ending September 30th, 2016, with such rental payments to be payable at the times and dates and in the manner set forth in the lease agreement, and which lease payment obligation shall be a general obligation for the City of Prattville. And whereas, as part of the HPRA bond financing for the facilities, the City of Prattville will be required to enter into a continuing disclosure agreement and to execute and deliver other certificates in connection therewith. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized and empowered to execute and deliver a lease agreement for HPRA for the office building in such form as the mayor shall approve at the basic rental amount of $249,000 per fiscal year, commencing with the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2016, and for the due and punctual payment of which the full faith and credit of the taxing powers of the City of Prattville are hereby irrevocably and sacredly pledged as a general obligation of the City of Prattville. Be it further resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute and deliver any and other necessary documents, instruments, agreements, or certificates necessary or required in connection with the lease agreement for the office building for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this item? Yes?
Is there anywhere we can hold a vote on this until after we have our executive session, so we can answer some questions?
That's appropriate if someone makes a motion to hold.
I made that motion that we hold this until after the executive session.
We have a motion to hold until after the executive session. We have a second?
We have a second.
We have a second. All in favor of holding this item, signify by raising your right hand? This item will be held. As stated earlier, we will be going into executive session shortly, but in order for those of you who have something to say, we do have a portion of comments from persons present and closing comments, so we will take care of those two items and then ask for that motion, so when we return, all we will have to do is adjourn. Anyone wishing to speak on any comment at this time? Yes, ma'am.
John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace. At the December 1st meeting, you asked me to meet with the mayor regarding the 549 garbage cans, because I'd asked where these will be located. I did meet with him. He gave me a blank map and said that was to be decided or determined, and I'm just wondering if since that, you have had requests from your... And I'm just wondering if since that you have had requests from your residents or your constituents about where those are going to be located. I still feel that since you voted to buy five hundred and forty-nine garbage cans that rather than them just sitting there and waiting to be asked to be used, that you would, you would have known who wanted those and where they would be used.
I want to say that I have, my phone's been blowing up for garbage cans. Everybody on Silver Creek Circle's wanting them. Just about all of my district has been asking for them. They see my can out there and start saying, it's not fair. You have one, I want one, type of a deal. So.
Do you have a number?
I would say I would have gotten seventy-five, eighty different responses. Through phone calls and texts saying, hey, I really want one of these things. I've had several people in other districts call, dear Trace, a lot of your neighbors have called. I tell them, call their council members when they get those phone calls. But honestly, it's day-to-day operations. Our job is to buy them. It's the mayor's job to put them out. So I'm going to be patient and see where he sticks them. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm just, I'm, I have to say, I'm just surprised that you purchased something and you don't know, you know, you don't know where they're going. And again, I brought up that there's a thousand that was budgeted for the sanitation department. And it just seems that that would be something that, you know, we would know. And there was not coverage on this. You know, if there had been an article or something in the paper, then people would have known that it was available. But I looked and I don't even think I saw it on the city's website except maybe for the, and the minutes were just approved. Or I should say the December first ones were approved at the December, the second December meeting. So I was just, you know, I was following what you said, but I still didn't get an answer.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I hope in the future. I beg your pardon? Oh, I believe me, he told me that very specifically. Yes. And I, but I went to him. I tried to get the answer and I didn't get it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to make comments at this time? Yes, sir. Come on.
Thank you for hearing me, counsel. My name is Benny Stinson. I'm a general contractor, been in business thirty-seven years. I live in one forty-four Livingston Circle. I encountered a situation in buying my business license here the other day that I never have in thirty-seven years. And that is the feeling that I have been double charged from one municipality for doing work in another municipality. And I discussed it with the clerks while buying it and so forth. And pointed out that the non-permitted jobs should be just that, non-permitted jobs. I bought a license in Millbrook. I bought a permit in Millbrook. I paid big money over there and then I got charged zero point two five here in Prattville for doing work in Millbrook. I've never had that happen in my life. I checked other municipalities. I'm going to give you all a rundown. I'll make this quick. That do the correct way, which is they charge their city limits only. Millbrook, Wetumpka, Montgomery, Auburn, Opa-licka, Alabaster, Huntsville, Mobile. The only three cities I can find that do what Prattville does is Birmingham, Tuscaloosa and Prattville. I feel the wording has been misinterpreted from the beginning. That where it says non-permitted jobs, what Montgomery has always done, because I was licensed over there for about twenty years when I first started. They always had that on there. And what you did is you, they gave you an opportunity to pay for any jobs you did not permit. And they still do that to this day. They do not try to charge for any jobs you've done in Millbrook, Wetumpka or Prattville or whatever else. In talking with Birmingham and Tuscaloosa, could just go a little further with this. Since when you do it this way, you're subject to an audit. So I wanted to know from Birmingham and Tuscaloosa. I said, do y'all have someone in particular to do the audits? Because I'd like to talk with them. And as soon as I approached that, it was instant confusion. They could not come up with anyone. They don't have a CPA because they require CPA. Our licenses are due in January. We don't pay taxes until April. Who's got their books done in January? So who can do an audit? I mean, this is a, this is a, an amendment or ordinance or whatever you want to call it, that is unenforceable at the best. I mean, you, you would have to have somebody that you're paying, of course, a CPA, which doesn't require a license in our state to do this and to audit it for it to work. What I'm asking is for the city to take into consideration doing it the way the other municipalities that we pattern ourselves own, especially Auburn, Opa-licka. Look at what they're doing and they're doing just what I'm saying, which is only their corporate city limits. And then they're only charging like Auburn only charges point ten, excuse me, Montgomery charges point ten, not point two five. And that's just for corporate city limits, nowhere else. Any questions?
Council Bow.
You'd called me earlier this week on this subject. I did take the liberty to call the league. The league informed me that the council has every right to set what we charge and the way we charge. So we have, we as a board have the right to pull it back to the just charging for what's sold by businesses inside the city limits, not charging for what they sell outside the city limits. I also talked to my attorneys. They told me the exact same thing because I wanted to get another opinion to make sure I wasn't stepping on toes. It would cost the city a little bit of money, but we could always go back and charge lawyers because they don't get charged a business license for what they sell. We could charge doctors. They don't get charged for what they sell. Accountants, engineers, realtors, and the list goes on and on that does not get charged this fee. So we could always look at maybe everybody paying their fair share and then the business owners that are getting robbed and getting charged twice, they wouldn't have to get robbed. Because I know it gets very irritating, but thank you for bringing this up.
Well, I'd like to say that one other thing that this house I built in Millbrook, I used all Prattville subcontractors. I bought all materials. We currently have two large companies, three really, that build here that all their money flows to Opa-licka and to Montgomery and Fort Worth, Texas. Okay? They only pay in Opa-licka a hundred and ten dollars to come and build fifty or sixty houses here over here in Pendlebrook. Which is, this is a joke. I mean, and I get charged after having a office and pay taxes and so forth to build over in Millbrook. Doesn't make sense. It's not fair. Doesn't make sense and never will. I think it needs to be rescinded and that's, that's what I'm asking the council to consider. And I appreciate y'all's ear. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any questions or comment from Mrs. Stinson before you have a seat? Thank you, Mrs. Stinson. Anyone else like to speak on any other issue? Mayor, you have an closing comment? Council Striplin? Council Brown? Council Sterns? Council Whiteside? Council Bowles? Council Boone?
Yes, sir. Quickly, I'd just like to invite everybody to come out Saturday and participate in the Mardi Gras parade, both council and spectators. Thank you so much.
As stated earlier, I'm going to be asking this council to go into an executive session. So would I ask someone to make a motion that we go into executive session? Have a motion on the floor to go into executive session? We have a second. All in favor signify by raising the right hand. We will adjourn for executive session, hopefully for approximately one hour or less. And we will come back and then adjourn, only adjourn.
David, we got to come back and vote on that item though. I forgot. We got an item to vote on. We got to come back. We got to vote on that when we come back. Do we have to vote on it?
We go. For those who are interested, we won't just be adjourning. We will have an item to take up that we held, that we do have to come back and give. Madam clerk, did you note the time we were back in at seven twenty-three, I believe? Out of executive session. We left with a resolution being held until after executive session. We are now back in session. So at this time, I ask for discussion. Will there be any discussions on this item? From anyone? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising the right hand. And the resolution is adopted. Seeing that we've had all comments, we've had all closing comments, comments from person present. At this time, we have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. We adjourn.